All right, good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome everyone to the fourth of nine public hearings hosted by the Independent District Commission, seeking your feedback on the draft district plan. This is truly a historic moment for the city, and this work does not happen without all of you. So I want to thank everyone for taking time and space on this beautiful Sunday to be here today. There is water and snacks on the side table back over there, so please take what you need during this meeting to be comfortable. My name is Josh Florenti, he/him. I have the privilege of serving as co-chair of the Independent District Commission alongside Commissioner Dwayne Judd. And with that, I will hand it over to our moderator to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jamie, and I will be moderating the session today. Can everyone hear me okay? I was told to eat the mic. All right, here we go. Before I provide more details about what you can expect today, I want to make sure that everyone has the ability to fully participate. So first, this meeting is being recorded and will be available online. If you missed anything while we are talking, or you want to make sure that your friends know about this session or what was talked about, you'll be able to find it at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. We have American Sign Language and Spanish interpretation available today, so if you would like to access those services, please see the folks at the sign-up table. You saw that table when you walked in. If you have questions, there are staff available in the room to help with logistics. Also, if you came here to provide testimony, and you haven't done so already, please go to the sign-in table, that same table that you saw when you came in, and we will put you in the queue to give testimony. And if time allows, after everyone who wants to has testified, the commission may be open to answering any questions that you may have. If you do not want to testify today, but you do want to provide comment, there are other ways that you can do that. I'm going to go over those pretty quickly. So you can submit public comment by emailing districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. You can call 311 and give verbal testimony over the phone, and I believe they can receive testimony in multiple languages. You can fill out a public comment card. You can find them on the back table back there. And you can also mail your written comments to the Office of Management and Finance, care of the Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Portland 97204. Oh, and there's also an online survey that you can fill out at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. The public comment period ends on Saturday, July 22nd, so you have some time. So I'm going to wrap up this intro by going over the agenda before handing it over to the commissioners. So for our time together today, the Independent District Commission co-chairs will start with an educational presentation to give you an overview of the commission's proposal. It's about 16 to 20 minutes long, and then we will open the public testimony for the community members to testify, so any of you here. After we are done with that and answering questions, we'll conclude our afternoon with some closing remarks before adjourning the session and enjoying the rest of our Sunday. Does that sound good? Okay. I'm going to now turn over to our Independent District Commissioners, Van Sickle-Robins and Hanson, for the educational presentation. Commissioners?
Hi. My name is Sharon Van Sickle-Robins, and I'm one of the commissioners on the Independent District Commission. I am a lifelong Portland native. I grew up in North Portland, went to Beach Grade School and Jefferson High School and the University of Portland, and today I live down the street in the Hillsdale neighborhood. And I'm going to start off the first part of the presentation. Next slide. While we're queuing up, I wanted to add my welcome to that from Commissioner Florenti. We're all really happy that all of you are here.
We'd also like to thank the Southwest Community Center for hosting us today. It does a great job. Really do appreciate that.
There's lots of materials. Please help yourself. Does anyone have a nice singing voice?
All right, everyone? Slight glitch, but we are ready to go.
Commissioner?
Yes. So in November of last year, almost 60% of Portland voters elected or decided to change the way the city government in Portland operates. And one of the things that was part of that change has to do with how the council is elected and structured. So currently, all of the members of Portland City Council can live anywhere in the city, and they're elected by voters across the entire city. Under the new system approved by voters, four geographic districts will be created, each represented by three city commissioners who reside in that district and are elected by voters in that district. So there'll now be, starting in November 2024, there'll be 12 district-based city commissioners rather than the current five at-large members. The mayor, who will be in addition to those 12 commissioners, will remain elected citywide. The Independent District Commission that we all serve on was created as part of those voter-approved amendments, and we're tasked with preparing and adopting the district plan for city council elections that'll start next year. This primarily involves working with the community and professional experts to design the district map that will be in place from next November's elections all the way to 2030. Next slide. The Independent District Commission consists of 13 voting members and a group of alternates, and all of us were selected through an open, community-wide application process. We were appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council in January of this year. And as our name suggests, the commission is a fully independent community body authorized to create that district plan for the city of Portland. We have a unique authority. If nine of the 13 voting commissioners approve the plan, then it'll be adopted and final. However, if after two votes, we can't reach the nine-vote supermajority, then the most recent version of the plan that we voted on will be referred to City Council for its consideration and adoption. As the district commission prepares the plan, we're guided by the criteria in the new charter requirements and state and federal districting laws. We are required to hold nine public hearings. One public hearing we held early in the process before we developed the district plan so that we could seek public comment on whether additional plan criteria should be considered. We voted not to add criteria to those that are specified in the adopted charter measure. Eight additional hearings must be held, and we're in the middle of them right now, two in each of the proposed districts before we adopt to, vote to adopt the district plan. We released the draft district plan on June 1st, one month before we started these public hearings on July 5th, and we can't vote on the plan until one month after our last public hearing, which takes place on July 16th. We actually decided to hold nine public hearings for this part of the process because we added a Zoom hearing to provide more opportunities for widespread community input from those who could not come and participate in the in-person hearings we're holding. We've got to adopt a plan by no later than September 1st, and we have received questions throughout this process about whether we couldn't take more time because the timeline seems very compressed, and the answer is no, because our timeline is one of the things prescribed in the charter amendments that were adopted. So there are a couple of things that we're having to consider as we create the district plan. The first is the federal laws that relate to creating districts initially and redistricting. The first of those is the Equal Protection Clause, and the second is the Voting Rights Act. Under the Equal Protection Clause, the creation of initial districts, which is what we're doing, and the updating of districts, which happens in redistricting processes, they must be substantially equal in population, and that is the one-person, one-vote requirement. The primary tool that's used in redistricting or establishing initial districts is the federal census. The U.S. Constitution requires that that census is conducted once every 10 years to count every resident of the United States, and it includes basic demographic data, including total population by age, race, housing type, housing occupancy. Because the district populations shift over time, district boundaries need to be redrawn after the census is administered every 10 years to ensure that each person's vote remains equally weighted. We have also received questions throughout the process asking us to consider how population may shift in Portland over the next five, 10 years. But we have to work with the data from the 2020 census, and we'll have to leave that to the folks who will be doing this work in 2030. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 prohibits districting plans that are intended to be racially discriminatory or that are shown to have a racially discriminatory result, and so that is one of the things that we will not violate. So the other thing that we're considering are the plan criteria that were actually in the voter-approved charter reforms. And as I mentioned earlier, we voted not to add any criteria to those that were already specified. These criteria require that the district commission ensure that each district, as nearly as practicable, is contiguous and compact, meaning that each district is one geographically connected piece without any unconnected elements. And the smallest element that we're working with as we design the maps is a census block. Second, we have to utilize existing geographic or political boundaries, and those can be both natural and man-made boundaries like highways, mountains, rivers, which already often divide communities or create innate boundaries, or political boundaries like legislative county or school districts, for example. Third, we're not to divide communities of common interest, and those are recognized by academics and jurisdictions throughout the country as groups that share a common policy concern and would benefit from being districted together. Dividing those communities of common interest often leads to a decreased ability for them to advocate for their community's needs or priorities. Fourth, the districts need to be connected by transportation links, meaning highways, roads, streets, or public transportation. And the districts need to be of equal population, which obviously means same number of people, although we have some flexibility, and the commission is working to create a district plan with less than 5% deviation in the population between districts. The district commission must also ensure that no district is drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party, incumbent elected official, or other person, or diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. And these criteria have been upheld in federal courts regarding the formation of districts across the country. So we've got the criteria, but really, the way that we look at the criteria is we overlay data on the city as a whole. So on the screen, you can see a variety of examples of the data that relate to different criteria. Some of the criteria require that we use specific data sets. For example, population or any voting rights-related issues must use the data released in the 2020 census and the most recent American Community Survey. And the American Community Survey is an annual survey at a smaller scale than the census that compiles additional demographic and socioeconomic community data. And some data sets can be used to help define multiple criteria. For example, neighborhood association and school district boundaries, or high school enrollment areas, could be considered existing political boundaries, but they also could be considered communities of common interest because their quality and effectiveness may be a shared concern in a particular community. The criteria around communities of common interest are really where we're hoping to hear the most from all of you about how you consider your community, how you define it, what kind of boundaries you apply to it. That's really what we're looking for from all of you. We've been working with technical districting consultants to gather a lot of different sets of data to allow us to do our work, and I would encourage you, if you haven't gone to our website and looked at the mapping application that's there, I would encourage you to do so because the most detailed application, mapping application that's on there, has probably 30, maybe more than 30, data sets that you can overlay on the map of Portland, so you can see where different kinds of communities of common interest may live across our community. Some of those data sets that you'll see or overlays include socioeconomic status like household income, voter turnout across the city, public transportation routes, homeownership versus renters, access to different kinds of public goods and services, and many others. We've been doing a lot since we began our work to try and engage a broad cross-section of community with our work, and we've already received many, many hours of public testimony, hundreds of public comments, over 200 draft maps have been submitted by members of the public through the online mapping tool. We've also attended a lot of community-led districting events. We've held individual leaders with, individual meetings with community leaders, and we've spent hours as a commission reflecting on what we've heard so far. The commission has made a really deliberate effort to center the voices of those who haven't been historically represented in city decision-making. And with that little background on our work, I'd like to pass it over to Commissioner Hanson to talk about the draft maps.
Thank you so much. Can everybody hear me okay? Perfect. My name is Commissioner Hanson, she/her pronouns, and I'm going to walk through the draft maps now that you've got some context as to everything we took into consideration while putting these together. So as you all know, on June 1st, the IDC released three draft maps that all outline possible boundaries for the new districts, and these draft maps are based on, first and foremost, the district criteria that you all approved as voters, that Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins just outlined, and then also direct community input that we had received to date before actually putting these together. So as you look at the three, they share some specific characteristics. So first and foremost, all communities east of I-205 are in one district. The four non-Portland public school districts, which are Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial, are all in one district. The western border of that eastern district, which I believe is in green on the map, runs along I-205 and 82nd in the same way across the three in order to preserve the Jade District interests and the Lentz neighborhood. In addition to that, neighborhoods along the northern part of Portland, across the northern part of the city, are in a single district with the exception of those in the Park Rose School District. In that area, the north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard are in a single district. Historic Albina, which is in north-northeast Portland, is preserved in a single district, and all communities west of the Willamette are in a single district. So those are some of the similarities across the three, but the three also do reflect some choices and trade-offs that we made and had, came up with several different answers for. So first and foremost, it certainly surprised me to learn that west of the Willamette River is actually less than a quarter of the population of the entire city of Portland, by about 20,000, I believe, and so any map that has the whole west side together must cross the river to incorporate some part of the eastern side of the river to achieve that equal population criteria. So you'll notice that the Alder map crosses only in lower southeast to include Selwood, Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Reed with the western side. On the Cedar map, it crosses along kind of the inner east side and down towards Brooklyn and Selwood, so that includes both the central eastside Industrial Council District and part of the Buckman neighborhood, as well as parts of Brooklyn and Selwood. And this, this kind of area in the Cedar map shares eight bridge connections, as well as bus and max line corridors. And then thirdly, the Maple map crosses the river in the central east side from I-84 to Powell to include the Buckman and Kearns neighborhoods and part of Hasport Abernathy neighborhood as well. And then another distinction across the three, if you look at the kind of yellow-to-teal border, the boundary between kind of the north and northeast and central-southeast districts, you will notice that the Alder map primarily uses neighborhood organization boundaries, so that's Rose City Park and Roseway in particular. The Cedar map uses Sandy, like straight through, as a transit boundary dividing some of those neighborhoods, and then the Maple map is a mix of both. So it contains Rose City Park in one district, and Sandy divides Roseway into two districts. So now I'm going to go through each of the maps individually and share a bit about the philosophy behind each of them. So next slide. So the Alder map is built around preserving established neighborhood boundaries. Remember, as my fellow commissioner shared, a lot of this is like weighing and balancing all of these criterias, and so kind of what is weighed more or less heavily in different maps. So the Alder map divides the central city among three districts using the Willamette and 84 as boundaries to promote engagement across districts with those central city issues. So you think of the central city as kind of Lloyd, central eastside downtown, those are in three separate districts, to promote engagement across those, and also to distribute the various assets, things like the Convention Center downtown, like a lot of those assets in multiple districts. In the Alder, neighbors in the lower southeast, so kind of Selwood, Eastmoreland, share a district with demographically and socioeconomically similar communities on the west side of the river, connected by the Selwood and Ross Island bridges. Next slide, please. So the Cedar map is based around a different philosophy, around prioritizing transit corridors. So this map uses northeast Sandy, southeast 12th, 82nd, and Max Lines, acknowledging that a lot of Portlanders intuitively know these corridors and think of them as boundaries and ways of connecting different parts of the city, thinking about accessible transportation to bring communities together. So this map includes, it does cut through some neighborhoods. Here, we've got central eastside, and then Brooklyn and Selwood are in the west district since they share those eight bridge connections that cross the river. Next slide, please. So the Maple map is built around the philosophy of keeping the central city together as much as possible, with the exception of Lloyd that is part of northern, or that's part of that historic Albina. And so this really focuses on the central city as defined by the Central City 2035 Plan, and also adds several east, inner eastside neighborhoods. So the central city is really what includes the city's most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods, kind of in the, in the central east side, where residential and commercial uses are tightly interwoven. So in this map, eastside neighborhoods with a high percentage of renters, like Buckman, Kearns, share a district with westside renter-heavy neighborhoods like Goose Hollow, Old Town, South Waterfront, so kind of that renter-centric center, as well as the rest of the west side. All right, so that's the overview of the map. On the next slide, we've got some questions for all of you. So we, as an IDC, it is our guiding principle that the final map is reflective of community input and the priorities of Portlanders of all backgrounds with a specific focus on creating an inclusive and equitable process. So now that the maps have been released for public input, we are super excited to have all of you here today to engage, to hear additional feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, ideas, like we want to hear it all. So the community feedback that we receive in this session and in all of the others that we're hosting this month are integral to informing the final district plan that we will decide on in August. And to kind of zoom out for a second, we really do see this as a collective opportunity to fundamentally shift our city for the better. The gravity of this task cannot be understated. This is the first time that we are getting to establish districts for this city. Not only will they be used to elect the city council next November, they will be in place until after 2030 and kind of the roadmap for the districts beyond that. So it is our hope that the three maps here prompt reactions and reflections about how you want to be represented in City Hall. And while we understand that some of what was presented today might be a bit technical, we hope that the presentation has given you a better understanding of our work and rationale. One more slide before we begin public testimony, which will outline some of the other ways that you and/or friends and neighbors can share feedback or get involved. As you have heard before, the comment period is open through July 22nd. There are myriad ways to get ahold of us, and we encourage that you do so and invite your friends and family to do the same, as outlined on the screen. Online comment form, email us, call 311, send some snail mail. And that is the end of our presentation, and I will pass it back to the facilitator to start the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Can everyone hear me? It feels like, oh, there we go. It's on now. That was a lot of fantastic information, and we are going to now begin public testimony. If there's anyone here that heard all of that information and hasn't signed up yet but would like to testify, it's not too late. Go ahead and feel free to sign up at the back table. Sophia's waving her hand, and we can get you into the queue. But to ensure this is a welcoming space, whether you are testifying or not, we would appreciate if everyone here today would help follow some rules of conduct. So disruptive conduct, such as interrupting someone, or shouting out from your seats, or not concluding your testimony during the allocated time, or using foul language, will not be allowed. If there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being removed for the remainder of the meeting, and we don't want any of that. So thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome and making sure everyone has the opportunity to be heard. So I'm going to see who has signed up. It looks like we have five signed up so far. After everyone who signed up is called, we will ask to see if there's anyone else who wants to testify. For everyone testifying, you will have three minutes to speak, and I'm going to keep track on my phone, and you will hear what I believe to be a very pleasant-sounding chime. You can tell me afterwards if you do not agree. I'm sure it can get annoying. When giving testimony, we ask that you please state your name, your ZIP code, or your neighborhood, if you prefer. If you are testifying on behalf of an organization, we would like to know that. And please identify which maps you are testifying on, if you have a particular one in mind. And lastly, we ask that you please remember to go slowly for our interpreters. So I'm going to now start calling folks in two. So if I call your name and you're up next, please go to the microphone over on the side aisle, and then I'll also call the next person so that you can get ready, and we'll go through it that way. Okay, are we ready to go? The first two to testify are Cade Doyle and Margaret Noel. Cade? Or Katie? Cade? The microphone?
You're welcome to come first. Hello. My name is Margaret Noel. I live in northwest Portland. The ZIP code is 97210. Thank you to all of you for the work you've done, for your research and your outreach, and I also thank you for this hearing and the other hearings you're doing. I under- I understand why West Portland must be combined with a part of East Portland. That makes sense. I also have a very strong preference for making sure that the communities of interest are kept together. I've tried to look carefully at all three of the proposed district maps, and I have read some of the pros and cons and the socioeconomic and racial makeup of each of the districts. From the first time that I looked at these maps, I have preferred the Alder map. However, I confess that my preference is based more on my feelings than on the objective data. Because I have friends in the Selwood and Westmoreland and Eastmoreland area, and because I go to restaurants and shops there, I feel more aligned with that part of East Portland. I also have compared Alder with what I can tell about the Cedar and Maple options. So I also like that the Alder option fairly distributes significant assets, like the business areas and the convention center and educational institutions, among all the districts. And it's important to me that it was designed to keep neighborhoods together. This morning, I asked some of my neighbors what they thought about the districts, and one of them asked for more information about the data that your commission used. And at that point, I knew about some of the data, but I didn't really know about the map overlays. So I really appreciate your talking about that and would like to know where he or I can find how to, how to access those map overlays. So if you could tell us that, that would be very helpful. So anyway, the whole thing also about common policy concerns and how that applies to communities of interest would be useful. Thank you very much.
Answer questions at the end of testimony, so we'll make sure to mark down your question. So Cade Doyle, followed by Mark Rozansky.
I, I appreciate. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
I appreciate, also appreciate this chance to be able to share together. And I also favor the Alder map. Both personal reasons in that I went to Reed College and professional reasons in that my office is at 97219 and my home is in 97219. And I, I love the city of Portland. I was born at Emmanuel Hospital. So I, I really shouldn't talk too much, and I just appreciate so much the chance to say that, and I favor Alder very, very much. It just makes more sense, especially as to the transit pieces, because a lot of the people that, you know, we can get around now how we get around. And unless that the transit is going to make it a lot easier to walk around, I just don't see any sense in changing the district. I mean, sorry, I'm from over.
Thank you, Cade. Mark Rozansky, followed by Richard Gronostaski. I apologize if I am mispronouncing your names.
You've got all the skis. Commissioners, thanks very much for the very informative presentation. So I live in Westmoreland in southeast, and so in looking over the information made publicly available, and then your very rich presentation, I think very squarely Maple is at least my vote for the map. I think very strongly that when you talked about keeping communities of interest together, so I and my peers and neighbors, we are, you know, in, we are, we in Westmoreland, Brooklyn, Selwood, Eastmoreland, we're part of southeast. Where our, our relationships commercially, you know, even on transit corridors, right? I'm not cycling over the Selwood Bridge. I'm cycling up, you know, 12th and the 17th cycle corridor to southeast and even to go to downtown, right? I'm going through southeast neighborhoods. And I just want to point out that it's, you know, with, with all due humility, bridges and boulevards don't vote. So any, any plan that is sort of, is taking its orientation from transit corridor, that's important because those are public assets, but they're not represented, right? The city commissioners or the city council people, on behalf of their, you know, us, the people who live and use these transit corridors, will have important policymaking decisions and allocations of budget. But the map really has to be focused on, as you have put it, communities of interest and maintaining their integrity. And these are things like schools and parks and so forth, the common social infrastructure. So when I look at the map, I see common social infrastructure. So duly noted that this balancing that you have to do, but I think another reason why Maple appeals to me is that the central city assets are assets of, of the community. And I think the political representation of city council with three commissioners or three council people, you know, representing the interest of the city core, they will be able to be more focused in, in looking after those assets than dividing up these very important assets, which are unique and sometimes very large and complicated, among different districts. So again, as a resident of southeast, I urge the commission to take into account that dividing up southeast, the, the fewest orphan neighborhood solution, it seems to me, is to, is, is in Maple. And that the central city is both commercially and, and as a management exercise for the city, it's, it's, it's quite an exercise, and it should be in, you know, in a compact area, both sides. Those, that integration is, makes more sense than splitting up southeast neighborhoods, including the one I live in. And I thank the commissioners very much for their time and for the chance to, to be heard by, by us and to hear from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Richard Gronostaski, followed by Mary Ann Fitzgerald.
Yes, hello. My name is Richard Gronostaski, and I want to thank the commissioners for holding this meeting and for giving us all of the wonderful information. I think your website is also extremely useful in terms of being able to access information. I am, I am a member, I'm actually the treasurer of the Northwest District Association, a neighborhood association. However, any opinions I give here are strictly my own and do not represent those of the, of the Northwest District Association. Because I live in the Northwest, all three of these maps really don't do anything to the Northwest. I mean, it's really other neighborhoods that are affected. But however, as a member of a, of a neighborhood association, I feel that focusing on keeping together as many neighborhood associations as possible is, is a really valid criteria. And I think that because of that, I, I prefer personally the, the Alder map because of the fact that it maintains neighborhood associations more closely related, recognizing, however, that it does affect people in the, in the southeast more than those of us in the Northwest. I, I also wanted to bring up the issue of, I think this is the first time in probably the history of Portland that there is a, a true move toward representational government, where we will have representatives that are voted on by the people in the districts. And, and, and I think actually, although this is a wonderful first step, I think the ideal situation would be, since we have three representatives in each district, that each district be subdivided into thirds with a single representative who is solely responsible for all of the activities within that district, because that would give true representational government. I, I have lived in other cities where that's the case, where if there was a pothole on your street, you knew exactly the person who was responsible for that activity. And, but as I said, I think this is a great first start, and I, I do want to thank the commissioners for all of your hard work and for putting on these presentations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Mary Ann Fitzgerald, followed by Bruce Coaster.
Thank you. I'm short. So my name is Mary Ann Fitzgerald, a longtime resident of southwest Portland, and I'm here to ask you to adopt the Alder map. But to back up, I don't understand how the Charter Commission came up with four districts. I've searched the Charter Commission data. There's no key document that explains that rationale. So given that we are, we have what we have today, we need to look at four districts, not five, six, or seven. So for decades, the city of Portland's 95 neighborhood associations and seven district coalitions have served as a geographic areas of common interest and have historically focused on livability, public safety, and transportation needs. Some of the transportation needs in southwest Portland are very different from the ones in southeast Portland, north Portland, east Portland. The city is not one size fits all. Portland's comprehensive plan divides the city into five urban areas of distinct characteristics. And so none of these maps before us really look at the geographically historical boundaries of neighborhood associations, district coalitions, or urban design. So from my perspective, the neighborhood associations remain a very important feature of Portland's geography. Neighborhood leaders understand local issues and facilitate dialogue about proposed solutions within their geographic area, as well as citywide issues. Again, Portland is not one size fits all. So the materials that I have about the rationale with the four maps that are proposed before us have nine sentences documenting your decision. Commissioner Hanson, I wish that we could have some of the information that you presented today in a written form, so that future generations would understand, how did you come with, up with these maps? I can't, I don't know. So once again, I recommend that you adopt the Alder map and provide more detailed explanations about why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Bruce Coaster, followed by Richard Freemark.
Well, my comment is mostly a question, a little geographical history to help myself. I live on Garden Home Road. My grandmother bought the house in 1926. I grew up there, and then I inherited, so I feel a real part of the, the community. And what I'm, my question is not so much about the area, but I really feel that the neighborhood associations contribute to, to helping the neighborhood, and I've been involved with them for about 13 years, and it, I would like to know what the plan, how neighborhood associations will fit into this new plan. So that's just basically my, my comment's a question. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Bruce. And we have noted your question, and we'll answer them after public testimony. Richard Freemark, followed by Vivian Solomon.
It's Richard Freemark. I am chairman of the Bridle Mile Neighbors Association, and I'm here speaking on my own behalf. I'm kind of disappointed on how the whole commission has come together. I have watched a number of the episodes on Zoom, and it seems like the dialogue has been dominated by a few members, not all the commissioners. It may be that the commissioners are listening, but if they're participating, we don't see it. We've heard numbers of around 200, 185 people have responded to surveys. That's a fraction of a fraction of a percent of the people of the city. It seems like the communications from the commission to the city has been somewhere between piss poor and rotten. And a postcard went out just the other day. It highlighted these three districts. I was the only person on my street, the only member of the neighborhood association who received the postcard. So I think if you think you are communicating, you are not. If you are taking in the, the cultural differences between the south side of the west side of the district, on the, on the west side of the river, and the industrial side of the west side of the river, and the central city side, or portion of the west side of it, you have three social, economic, business districts that are so different, they shouldn't even be considered in the same breath, let alone the same district. Putting three commissioners, which people voted on, is, it's a cat fight. You're going to have somebody who wins the election, let's say with 60% of the vote, and the other two get 15, and the balance goes to the third person. The person who gets the most is going to say they're in charge. The other two people are going to just be ponies to the show. And it's, I can't believe they took a terrible form of government that we have here and are proposing a system that's worse. I used to be the deputy mayor for economic development in New York, and in Portland, if you have a pothole, you can call a phone number that doesn't get answered, and now you're not going to know which commissioner within your district you're going to call. So I think we've wasted a lot of taxpayer money. I think this whole proposal was pre-baked. The map company was pre-selected. The attorney was pre-selected. How the commissioners got selected is beyond me. Some people were drummed off because they didn't seem to fit in the makeup of the commissioners. No excuse was publicly made for the people who left. It's a sham, it's a shame, it's a waste of taxpayer money. And why a commissioner should be paid $136,000 a year when they're only doing one-third of the job is beyond me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. The last person on my list is Vivian Solomon.
Hello, Commissioner, this is Vivian Solomon. I'm a member of the Marshall Park neighborhood, and I would like to echo what the previous speaker said and, and agree with those comments. I'd also like to reference an article in the June 28, 2023, an opinion piece in the Oregonian, which bothered me because it said that there aren't enough people on the west side to form its own district. And I believe that we should, among the choices, go with Alder, because I think neighborhood associations are very important. But I don't believe that enough thought has gone into the entire planning process. I agree with the idea of having aldermen who are responsible to the people in their neighborhoods, not to people who live 10 miles away, or even five miles away. I would like to know that when I have an issue, whether it be crime, safety, pollution, potholes, that there is a person I can call who is responsive to me and to my neighborhood. And I'm not sure that any of the proposals set forth address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. So there's nobody else who has signed up to testify, but I'd like to take a minute to see if anyone else has had a change of heart and would like to provide testimony? Yes, ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone, and as a reminder, if you would please state your name, your zip code or neighborhood, and if you're part of an organization you're representing, and which map you would like to talk about.
My name is Joan Hamilton. I live in Hillsdale neighborhood, 97219. But I don't associate with the neighborhood association. I want to, I want to say thank you for the work you've done. I value the work you've done. I found the presentation fascinating and really admire you for being able to work through all these details. I am excited by what you're doing. I just think Portland needs to look to the future. And I think maybe some, I, I don't want to say anything negative about neighborhood associations. I think they're wonderful, the people do wonderful work, too, volunteer efforts. But I do think it's necessary for more people to look citywide, to what best will help the city, what will revive our downtown, and how we can improve our transit system. So whatever kind of meets all those goals, I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anybody else who would like to testify who has not yet spoken? I see a hand. Yes, ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone and give us your name?
Hi, my name is Eileen Lipgin. I live in southwest Portland. I have spent time in all of the areas on those maps in some way or another. I know many people who live in the southeast, so I visit there often. The far southeast, northeast, I worked for a long time around interstate in northeast Portland, but I live here. And for 36 years, I think so, I'm familiar with these areas, and I think with some of the characteristics and nature of them. And I agree with many people who are saying Alder best represents that neighborhood. The neighborhood associations are relevant for having had some influence and watching over the issues in those neighborhoods. The neighborhoods are also defined by the nature of the living circumstances there. So in southeast, I mean southwest Portland, and crossing the river into Selwood and Westmoreland, I think there's many similarities, more single-family dwellings. More single-family dwellings admittedly, a lot of green space thankfully. The river proximity, hills, ravines, and those create issues that I think are more relevant to those areas than they are to the flatlands of southeast Portland and downtown. And yeah, so I think Alder best represents what's going to group people, and people are what we're talking about, not thoroughfares or bus routes by similar interests. And that's what we're talking about here, is how people will get to vote and influence the legislators and the rule makers and the managers of our communities. Bus routes are going to be relevant for the people within each district, but I don't think they should define how things are divided up. And similarly, major thoroughfares, sometimes they define neighborhood characteristics, of course, because the Willamette River cuts you off from certain things, and so do major thoroughfares like Sandy. But that's accounted for if you look at neighborhood designation. So my favorite would be Alder. I think you've done a good job of trying to think through the possibilities and why, and accounting for even more evenness about demographics within them. So I thank you for that. So maybe would be my second, but Alder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eileen. Super impressed that nobody's had to hear the chimes yet. Although, I'm a little bummed because it's kind of fun. Anybody else would like to testify who has not signed up and has not yet spoken? I'm not seeing anybody, which means commissioners, we have time to answer questions if you would like. We do have a few that we have noted during testimony, but I'm wondering if anyone wants to respond to anything directly that you are, that you heard, that you would like to kind of provide comment on, or I can pose questions. It's up to you. Does anyone have any response?
Sure. Let's, if we could, first of all, again, thank you all for attending today and all the comments. This work that we're doing.
You're going to eat the mic?
My apologies. Thank you all for showing up this afternoon. We really do appreciate the commentaries. As Commissioner Van Sekul said, this is the greatest work that we can do, is listening to you. These maps are formation of the broader thoughts of the citizens of Portland. What we've tried to do is to present them, these initial draft maps, as the selection of choice, what, the aggregation of feedback that we've gotten thus far. So I hope that makes sense. We don't, we're not owners of these maps. We're drawing them based upon the feedback that we're getting from you guys. So I want to go to the question around neighborhood associations and just do a quick straw poll. How many of you right now are members of neighborhood associations?
Now or have been recently?
Right now.
Right now.
Yeah, got you. Okay, great. How many of you in those neighborhood associations, how many of them have been involved in selecting candidates for a city council?
Selecting candidates?
How many of the neighborhood associations, if you're a member of a neighborhood association right now, have they been involved or engaged in selecting members for city council? Got you. Okay, cool. So one of the questions that was asked is, what is the role of neighborhood associations? Right? Historically, as Commissioner Van Sekul stated, there was a difference between the government operations as prior to the November 2023 election, where it was a citywide, there was no representation for any particular community. That's going to change as you go forward. So the question then becomes, and this is beyond the scope of what the district commission is doing, but we recognize that what now has to happen is that communities will have to organize themselves, mobilize and engage in the election process in a different way than they have historically. So this is one of the roles that neighborhood associations can have in the future representation process for Portland, is to engage your organizations, ensuring that they are involved and informing, much like we're doing right now, informing those folks who will be selected about your community's issues, and making sure that you can hold them accountable, much like you're going to hold us accountable for the drawing of these maps. Does that make sense?
No.
Cool. Yes?
I have a different question.
Sure.
Is there some place? I'm going to reserve my time to speak to you about this to the Zoom meeting on Friday.
Your name, sir?
John Gibbon. I live in southwest, south of I-5, just downhill from Mountain Park and on the way to Lake Oswego. My question is, and I've been ill, I had COVID and had some health issues that kept me from getting involved earlier in the process. I assume that the process is past the point of looking at different configurations of the maps. Is that correct or not? Because I'm one of the few people around that has actually represented a district in Portland for a few years. I know people don't think that happened, but there was something called Purb, that Public Utility Review Board, that existed for a number of years. And I was the west side representative to Purb for about five years before the body morphed into the Public Utility Board. Anyway, it gave me a little perspective on this. And the question I really had was, is there any place on your website where I can get a look at the layout of the non-Portland public schools? Non-Portland public. (phone rings)
Mayor, if you go to the commission website and you go to the, there's a bubble you can click that says, "Draw a map," I believe it says.
Okay.
The first place that you'll, the first application you'll see is a map application, and the, are, these three maps are there, and you can overlay the school districts on that. And if you look at the maps at the back of the room, that outer east side band, it encompasses all four of those districts. They run long, north to south, in that green district.
That was real helpful. Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just piggyback off of that. If you go to the district commission website, as Commissioner Van Sekul-Robin said, the headline is, "Submit a district map." I'm looking at it right now, and if you click on that, that is where you find the map overlays. There had been a question from someone else about where we find Margaret, I believe, where we find general map overlays. The tool is linked from the website. It's called District R. And that's, you can map school districts, you can map renters versus owners, you can map household income, you can map racial demographics, kind of, that's the goldmine for that. Oh, it's in, sorry, I'm sorry, District R, you can click on that and it goes to G.I.S.'s website. I apologize, but it's all there.
Sir, are you providing testimony?
Question?
Question. Sure, go ahead. Please state your name.
Dr. Jim Gaudino. We live very close here in the south of Multnomah Village and we're renters. So my question is, and sorry, we came in late. I've been able to, I'm not really getting enough information on the website about, so we've got these maps, they were drawn, and the process for final selection. And my wondering is, shouldn't that be left up to the electorate? And why, why are we not? And then my other questions are, I noticed that the, there are different balances by race in the handout here, but what other factors, I'm an epidemiologist, what other factors were taken into account? And what's, what's the goal of the maps? Are you trying to cluster people together, balance by race? I read a little bit of the paragraphs and that kind of thing, but I'm just not sure what the commission was asked to achieve. And then how do we end up deciding on what districts actually get chosen?
Well, Mr. Gibbon, you know, we just went through a very long presentation, well, not a long presentation, but a very thorough presentation about all of that. So there is information available in the handouts.
I've read, I've read the handout because it was downloadable. But, but the questions that I have were not answered in the handout.
Is there any commissioner that would like to provide a succinct answer to that?
Please.
You came in too late, and I did, during the presentation about what we were considering, I did mention that if you go to that Arcsys application of the, of the mapping tools that is on our website, there is a bar over to the right with a lot of little stacked, it looks like a stack. It has probably 30, 40 different kinds of overlays of data that we've been looking at, that we've been laying across the map. They range from demographic and socioeconomic data to environmental data that's available, data that's available from PBOs, school, high school enrollment areas across the city, all kinds of different things that we're able to look at. The renter population versus the homeowners, what percentage of income you're spending on housing across the city. So there's a lot of things that we're, that we're looking at, and we're hearing from the public about things that they are most concerned about, that we're, you know, that we're looking for data sources on and using those.
Forgive me, go ahead, please.
Your other question about whether or not we should make the decision, we are following what the voters approved. The voters put this into our hands, and if we, as a super majority or more, agree on a draft map, which we have to do by September 1st, that is the map that will be used from here till it's done redistricting in 2030. That's just what voters approved, and that's what we're doing.
But that partially answers my question. You know, I understand I've used, I've actually led teams that have used ArcGIS and that kind of thing. So the question really was, what are the priorities? When you look at that kind of data, what lenses are you using to, for example, you know, make the choice between the three maps that are? And then, and then the input that you're using to make the decision, you just explained that, and what is that input? Just these meetings, public testimony, the engagement that's described here? Tell us a little bit more.
Well, I was going to say, we actually opened with a 30-minute presentation exactly addressing those questions, and I believe, I believe there are a couple of copies of the slides floating around. I'm seeing Sophia in the back. And on the slides themselves, we actually have the information that's exactly what you're asking about in terms of what we are legally obligated to do, what we're taking into, what the criteria were that the voter approved, voters approved that we're looking at, and then the data that we used to look at that criteria. So I'd refer you to Sophia for a copy of those slides, and then we'll be around afterwards if you've got specific follow-ups.
I might join the Zoom and ask questions, but, you know, there's, there's a, the availability of data, and then there's the purpose of and use of the data, and that's what my questions were about face-to-face here.
Mr. Gibbon, this meeting is also being recorded as are all of the hearings. And so if you want to watch the presentation, to hear the explanation out loud, if that would be more helpful, that is available on the website.
Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you. There were, before, because I think you've spoken before, if you don't mind, I'm going to raise a question that was asked earlier before we start hearing from people who have spoken before. One of the questions that has not yet been answered is, where, why only four districts? How did the IDC determine that there would only be four districts? What is the rationale?
The, that wasn't determined by the IDC. The IDC was tasked to, by the voters, to develop four districts. It was the voter amendment. So it was not something that the IDC itself came up with.
There was one question that said, can you share how common policy concerns are reflected in the district maps?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Van Sekul-Robin's explanation about how the overlays represent, fulfills that requirement. So for example, she talked about how school districts can be a combination of, thank you, can be a combination of neighborhood organizations as well as precincts because it's an, it's an aggregation of those common interests. So at times, we use those overlays to represent those common policies, but that does not supersede the feedback that we get from, from the community members. That's why we're here talking to each of you, to really understand how far out does your interest radiate across neighborhoods, across communities. And so that's why we're here. That's why she focused in on the definitions of communities of common interest, because it's, it's that effort. If you think about this, what we're trying to do here, and when I say "we," I'm talking about the collective of the Portland communities, which is, the output appears to be maps drawn. What it really is attempting to do is, for the first intentional time, to really define the relationship between communities across boundaries, right, across the community, neighborhood associations. And so that's why we're here. We're trying to really understand not just how, the process of creating a map, but the mapping of those relationships that extend from your household to your community, to your adjacent community, and more broadly, understanding that all of us still participate within the broadest community of Portland.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And can I, I just wanted to also thank, I can't remember who it was who talked about how southwest, the west side of the river is not a monolith. It's some very distinctly different kinds of communities. And it's been very interesting for me. I live in Hillsdale now. I've lived in other parts of the city, and it's been very interesting in these first few public hearings to hear that a lot of the folks who have spoken, who live on the east side of the river, they have kind of a monolithic view of what the west side is. And so I, I think one of the things, for me anyway, personally, I think what the voters were trying to encourage is a lot more collaboration across, across the city, across communities in the city, where parts of the southwest, for instance, that have those issues of terrain and runoff and, and all of the environmental issues associated with that, or parts of the southwest that were annexed into the city and don't have paved streets or sidewalks or city services of the same type, that they can bond with other parts of the city where those are the same issues. Communities of common interest don't necessarily have to be in a single geographic area. They, and in fact, they have to collaborate across the city. And if there's 12 members on the council, you have to have seven votes to be able to pass something. So there, it's going to force, hopefully, collaboration that breaks some of those boundaries.
Commissioner Monatas?
Can folks hear me okay? Can you hear me? Great. I just want to give my appreciation to everybody who spoke today, particularly folks who offered some good critical feedback also. I think that's really important for us to hear and just appreciate the different perspectives. I think it's really important in this process, and part of why I'm participating in this process on the commission, is that this particular commission, our particular project, is about representation. And right now, Portland does not have a representative government. We don't, do not have a system of representation. We have five folks who are elected citywide, who are accountable to no one in the city because they're elected citywide. And I give them a lot of grace because, you know, and I'm originally from New Mexico. I moved to Portland 10 years ago and was shocked to see that process in place and immediately thought, this is a violation of the Voting Rights Act, it's a problem. And so I got involved. But when I moved here, I think part of my, you know, question there too, was to give them some grace because not only are they elected citywide, they're elected and then handed bureaus regardless to run, right? They're responsible for running transportation, our parks. right, they're responsible for running transportation, our parks system, regardless of whether they have experience, this, this system, you know, was put in place a hundred years ago, doesn't really make sense for Portland right now, so this is, I don't want to overpromise in this process, and I think that's where I wanted to bring us back to this question about representation, because I think what's really important here, and what we want to be, you know, in partnership with you all on about this, is to say, what is the right next step, and what happened during the last election is, you know, the voters passed with, you know, it was over sixty percent, I think, support, a process and a, a little bit of an experiment, to be honest, because not only do we have, you know, four districts, we have multi-member districts, so we have multiple people representing each district, which was intended to be more collaborative and to actually diversify the number of folks to be part of that, but we also have a ranked choice voting system that's coming into place also, and so this is one piece of a larger puzzle, and we have no idea how it's going to go until after next November, but I did want to just bring it back to some of the feedback that I heard today from westsiders, I live on the east side, but I really appreciate being just on this side of the river to hear directly from folks about who they want to be aligned with, and I think one of the first speakers came up and said, well, this is really about a feeling, and I think, you know, it's important to trust that intuition and feeling as you're looking at these maps, we can dive into data, and we've been diving into data, it's very fun and exhausting, but I think that part of it is, as we're moving into a space and system of representation, think about things like voting strength, think about who's going to represent your interests in city council, how you're going to hold them accountable, so when you're thinking about these different maps in the district, who do you want sitting in city council to represent you, do the different map options provide you the opportunity to be holding one of those seats, so I think coming back to looking at the maps intuitively, looking at your gut thinking about it, who do you want to be aligned with in electing folks to represent you in city council after November, so I just wanted to bring this, because we can get into many details and weeds, but just leave that term "representation" on the table, and just, you know, extend an appreciation for all of the comments you made today.
Commissioner Siegel?
Well, well done. You've heard.
You'll need to get the microphone closer to your mouth, please.
Make a comment that's not on the district.
Ma'am, if you could wait, we're.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
You could sit behind Mr. Doyle if you'd like.
So basically, there were a couple of other questions that were asked.
Okay.
And, if I may, there were a couple of other questions that were asked, one of them was, what are the lenses through which we're looking, it's the voter-approved criteria, again, that was part of the presentation that you saw, it's been available to all the public hearings we've had to date, and will be further informed, and information we provide on that in our future hearings as well, so the lenses are the voter-approved criteria, another question was, sorry about that, good old guide dog puppy who's wanting attention, are these the final maps, that was a question that was asked, in my opinion, the answer's no, we worked really hard to come up with, and, you know, with a lot of debate going back and forth, whether there would be two maps or three maps, and how do you, I'm all right, I've done this a lot, thank you, and so basically, are these the final maps, no, they're not, it's a good initial attempt to generate comment, looks like we have, that was the intent, so we will be taking this information that you've taken time out of your day to provide, and it'll inform our further discussions as a commission, and there may be something that's called a spruce map, or whatever, whatever name we use, but, but the thing is, regardless, and we gave those names for the sake of simplicity, so you don't have to call something fourteen B, X, Y, Z, or what have you, so these were meant to generate discussion and questions, and so keep asking the questions, keep providing the comments, because you will inform how we, again, through the lenses of our criteria, develop maps as we work to fulfill our charge that you gave us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Doyle, you've been waiting so patiently, thank you.
Just another brief comment, again, I am in favor of the Alder map, and, and the reason that, the comment that I want to make, it seems like that we in the southwest, or we in the Alder, we've had fewer chances to meet in person, to talk, I mean, there's one, I guess it's downtown, which is just as inconvenient for all of us, and then there's this, which is beautiful for us, and that's all I have.
Ma'am, would you state your name?
Eileen Lubkin, this is just a comment about communication, when I got the postcard about these hearings, the location for the dates was not on there, I had to really look hard to find it, it wasn't even clear on the website, I don't remember how I found it finally, but it would be good to tell people so that they don't have to go hunting so hard for when is the one closest to me, so that, excuse me, that might be all I am able to say right now, but communicating that on the website and in future handouts, I'm going to a large organizational picnic this week, is there material I can bring along, yeah.
There is, and I'm going to ask Sophia to raise her hand in the back, so you can connect with her and get those materials.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Vivian Solomon, Marshall Park neighborhood, I wanted to respond to some of the comments about representation, and who do I want representing me, I want someone from my neighborhood, I want someone from where, near where I live to represent me, who understands what is going on around me, the idea that I need to work with someone across the river because they also have runoff issues, I think that's a higher-level issue, that we want to put smart people on the board, and they can collaborate with each other on citywide issues, the person representing me needs to represent my area's issues in conjunction with others, and I realize that we are not going to be in competition, I'm not suggesting that that's the ultimate goal, I just think that the closer to home, the better the representation.
Could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So in the, the prior former government, did it allow for that?
No.
Got you, so do you see this as an opportunity for improvement?
I do, but I don't necessarily agree with the way you're going about it, I don't think, I think Alder, as I said before, is the best of the choices I'm given, but I don't think there is sufficient safeguards for me to know that my Marshall Park neighborhood is being heard, as opposed to, oh, some other part of southwest Portland, or some other part of southeast Portland that happens to be lumped in with my part of town, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Mr. Galbino?
Dr. Galbino.
Doctor.
First of all, I want to back up and thank you guys for working on this, it's important, I feel a bit of frustration as a voter to have it as a yes or no, because there are some real problems in the current way this is going to be implemented, that's not your responsibility, I have a question of clarification, and then a comment, the clarification question is, and Commissioner Siegel, you mentioned it, the maps currently are kind of emerging, and are not the final ones, for this go-round, what's the next go-round, that's the question, when can, I assume it'd be forming another commission to modify the, like every ten years, we redistrict, and that type of thing, so that's my question, then I have a comment.
Every ten years, as you said, there would be an opportunity to redistrict based upon the release of the census data, so the next time would be 2030.
And that was in the ordinance we passed, or whatever the measure, okay, great, the comment that I have, one of my areas of expertise is community engagement, and especially patient, and I'm a public health physician, so everything that I do is around, you know, making sure that the community really asks for and gets what they want from government, and vice versa, that the expertise in government actually have the adequate resources to deliver on that, which we have a big problem in public health here, in looking at the slides, and this struck me when I looked at the report, the number, and you're counting the number of engagement, and for a city of, I don't know how many million people, we have less, about less than two hundred people that have engaged, that worries me about this process, and so I'll throw it back to you, and you might have to throw it back to somebody else, but how can we do better, so that here for more people, I too have concerns about coming to Portland and seeing a certain group of individuals, privileged individuals, always getting what they ask for, and communities often are left out, other committees are often left out.
Thank you. I'll just say, invite all your friends to the future hearings, help us spread the word, thanks. Ma'am, would you please state your name?
Hi, my name is Christine LaChance, I live in downtown Portland, nine seven two zero nine, previously in southwest, I lived in southern Oregon for a while, I've been in Portland for ten years, and my concern, when I first received the postcard, I felt like it was a map of the have and the have-nots, when I looked at all the blue on the west side, and I looked at all the green way, way east of the two oh five, I felt it's not going to be equal representation, because nobody is going to have equal access to downtown, I favor the one where maximum of the district will have access to downtown, but still it leaves out east of the two oh five, do you have any way of explaining how it can be remedied?
Could you, help us understand your question a little bit.
Well, I just feel like some people are going to have more representation than other, and more influence, because of the, the way the map is split up.
Got you, and what, what, just, again, just to help us, what do you think is driving that, is it the population size, is it the location?
Location, mostly.
So if you, so if there are going to be three on the east side in that green, and three in the blue, what is it that is causing for the inequity?
Well, I think west of the river, somehow there's more infrastructure, and people have probably more influence as a result of it.
This might be an assets question.
Yeah, so I, I didn't want to presume that, but one of the questions that we are, that the community is considering, is this notion of asset packing, so if you think about the, the location of, of high-value properties, and high-value public properties located in the central business area where a lot of investments is going in, should that be in one district, or should that be split across multiple districts, and that is a question that we're coming to get feedback from the community about, and, you know, as you heard the Commissioner say, so far, these are not final maps, these are maps to provoke conversations and to provoke feedback, so we're looking for ways in which we can resolve that question, so that we can come up with the appropriate mapping.
I like the sharing idea, but it still leaves people east of the two oh five out of what's happening downtown, that's one of my concerns.
Got you, so are you suggesting that one of the resolves would be to pull the central business district into the far east?
I don't know, I want them to have ease, same access, so that they can be equally, their concern can be equally represented.
Okay, that's fair, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question, I'm not quite clear, I thought that.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Bruce Kester, I testified before, or made a comment before, I'm not quite clear, I understood that one of these maps had to be decided on by September 30th?
Yeah.
A map.
A map, yeah.
A map, yes, so you said that you haven't made a decision yet, so, so there's still flexible things, but the definite map will have to be September 30th or whatever, is that correct?
September 1st.
September 1st, okay, thank you.
Bonnie McKinley, nine seven two one nine, it was interesting to hear information about spruce, and I really appreciate the representation, I'm so grateful that there's going to be changes in, in that, but I was wondering, I was listening to the gentleman person from the Selwood area, I believe, or Eastmoreland, and their problem with joining the west side, that makes sense to me, I was wondering in examining this, if you looked at maybe incorporating north Portland with the west side, because, I mean, there's some real environmental concerns, particularly with the critical, the critical energy infrastructure hub, that, you know, is concerns of a lot of people in northwest Portland, the Linton community, and the people of north Portland, Cathedral Park, Canton, so I was wondering if that was ever a consideration in what you're doing, thank you.
The answer to that question is yes, and we have heard feedback from the north Portland communities, much like we've heard from the far east, in terms of remaining whole, and participating as part of the north Portland, we have yet to have a conversation in the north Portland area yet, so we will, we're looking forward to getting that feedback when we go out there, and so the maps, as you've heard so far, is, again, just an aggregation of all the feedback that we've received thus far, but if we, if there is a strong influence from north Portland that they would like to see something different, we would definitely take that into consideration, thank you for that comment, appreciate it.
I'm looking around, last call.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm taking a shortcut.
Hello, my name's Meredith Wadlington, I live in southeast Portland, I wasn't planning on making a comment, I'm mostly just here to hear the public testimony and see how folks are feeling, and I want to ask kind of a process question, because something is like sticking with me that doesn't feel quite right, and it's like, I think the gentleman left who called this whole process a sham, and I, oh, you're still here, okay, and I am just looking at this panel of, and I see people of color, and I see young people, and I see people of a variety of abilities, and I see a public transit user, I know Josh, Commissioner Laurenti is a public transit user, and I commend the speaker who said that we need to think about the future, and this to me, like, feels very much like we're taking a step in the right direction, and so I want to ask the commission if you, I can't remember how many public hearings this is for you.
This is our fourth.
This is your fourth, okay, I wonder if any of you could share something that you've learned from public comment, and something that's influencing your work as you go forward.
Do I see some faces, thinking? Great question.
Yes, I will get close to the mic, I will not eat said mic, because it will feed back, one of the things that I've heard from our initial listening sessions, and through the hearing I attended with many of you in a Tabor space the other night, was how important, from what I've heard, neighborhood association boundaries are, and how they should be respected as much as possible, to the extent possible, the same with school district boundaries, and so that's just a couple of the things that we've heard, I've heard, from the public, and it's also, they're also among the many concerns that we've taken into account as a commission, in coming up with three alternatives to generate a a commission in coming up with three alternatives to generate a conversation with you all. So that's just a couple of points.
That's quite a juicy question. Anyone else want to give it a go? Commissioner Monheres?
Thank you for that fantastic question. I have participated in three of the four community meetings. And I think what's really struck me is the passion around the engagement and folks really just, the commitment folks have who have participated to their community and being able to identify, these are the folks I want to be with, these are the things that we need to consider, the importance of the neighborhood associations, but also folks just naming who they wanted to be with. But something that is sitting with me and I'm continuing to sit with it and trying to think about the timeline is the voices we haven't heard from for each of these maps. I think that there has been, what we've seen, and I'm looking at the back now and seeing the, luckily my glasses are on, the Alder map and seeing some of the stickies next to the Alder map. And I think part of that is, there has been a lot of representation from folks who are deeply involved in their communities and involved in the neighborhood associations. There have, I have not heard from the renter community about the Maple map, for example. And I haven't heard from folks in the central industrial east side about how they feel about some of the other maps. And so I'm waiting to hear from some of those folks who sometimes are spoken on behalf of, who haven't been present at these conversations and trying to think how we could add that level of engagement with the limited time we have left. Because I think it's really going to be important. And there was a process question asked earlier about what our next steps are going to look like in terms of coming to final maps. And I don't think that is clear yet, even from a commission perspective. I think we're, and it's important that it's not a little bit because I think that we are going to have to figure out how to gather this feedback, the hundreds of comments that we're receiving, which I find very interesting as well, and how to pull that together so that we can have a process where everybody's on the commission can have their voice heard and their, you know, vote put on. I mean, this is, this is a representative, you know, representative process sort of in practice. So I'm trying to think, I think one thing that's sitting with me is how to incorporate some of those other voices of folks who have not been participating in these and what we're going to do about that.
I actually feel like I have heard some interesting things. Granted, we all wish that there were thousands of people that were coming to the Zoom meetings and the, and the public hearings, although we have no, we'd have to do it at the convention center. But we have been trying very intentionally to have these in spaces that are familiar to parts of the community that may not traditionally, they don't come down to City Hall to a council meeting, for instance. So we're going to be, on Wednesday evening, we're going to be at Self-Enhancement over in North Portland. And later next week, we'll be out at the Charles Jordan Community Center near Columbia Villa. So we are trying to go where people are and where people are comfortable gathering in their communities. I was going to say what I have been interested in hearing on the renter perspective, granted it's not as overwhelming numbers as we might like. But it has been interesting to me that we've been hearing that renters aren't a monolith and that the people that rent in inner southeast in Buckman or Kearns don't necessarily think that their community is renters in the pearl. And that has been interesting for me to hear.
Just keep coming down the line. Many things, I think every step of the way my thinking has changed. I think many of us came to this process with a lot of, like not prior formed opinions, but rather a lot of curiosity to just see what we would hear. And to give one specific example, one of the things that has really shifted my thinking is people saying, okay, this map is great, but this one line needs to move three blocks this way because let me tell you about like the difference between like this street and that street and it's a three-block difference. And maybe I've driven through that neighborhood but don't know it intimately. And so that type of feedback has also been really helpful in addition to a lot of the bigger stuff other folks have mentioned.
I guess we're-
Would you keep going?
What does change look like, right? What does transformation look like? I think having attended each one of these sessions with Commissioner Laurenti as well and having a, getting the feedback from community members and even hearing the passion and the disagreement as well as the appreciation, this is what change looks like. This is the first time where Portlanders, Portlanders are, it feels like being engaged to understand not just the importance of policy and civic responsibilities for their particular neighborhood, but they're being asked to find alignment with an adjacent neighborhood and really understand that connective tissue. And so as they have this discussion, there have been voices of, I don't want to be associated with that group or I feel greater aligned with this group. And so this is what change looks like. Even the sort of disgruntled with the process and how this process is working, I think that it has not been perfect. But perfection is not the goal with this. I think the goal is to deliver what the voters expected, which has been the first step in providing, I think Richard talked about this, representational government and being more effective in that representation. And so this work of listening, this work of understanding perspectives, being compassionate is the most important work that we as commissioners can do. And it's the most vital thing that the community members can do in terms of helping us in this inaugural step of creating this representational government.
Thank you, Meredith, for the very thoughtful question. You know, I think something that I'm sitting with is that, this is like, as other commissioners have mentioned, this is our fourth of nine public hearings. We'll be doing five more next week. But something that I've come away with from all these meetings is that the only experts in the room are all of you, right? Like you all know what communities you belong to, you know what your needs are, and you know what issues y'all are facing. And something that I've really been sitting with is that, you know, is the way that these maps are going to bring new voices to City Hall and the way that, you know, what we hear from folks like you and, you know, we've said from the start of this process that there is no perfect map. And I feel like we should have that on T-shirts and buttons and stickers at this point because it's true, there's so many ways that, you know, the final map that we vote on will not make every Portlander happy. But after, you know, having worked with our fellow commissioners these last few months, you know, I have every confidence that if there was a perfect map to find, I think this group of folks would have found it. So the next commission that gets formed after 2030 will have the added benefit of time and notes from our work to improve upon. So, you know, while this process, I think some folks have offered some great feedback on community engagement and communications. And I think when it comes to public input and community engagement, there's always going to be room for improvement, and that's something we've been really conscious of. But I do think we've done a pretty good job with the time that has been given to us for this task. And yeah, this process doesn't happen without your input and your expertise. So I want to thank you all for, you know, uplifting the needs of your communities and your perspectives and really grounding ourselves in your feedback to get to a final map. So thank you all.
Well, thank you, commissioners. What a great way to start wrapping up this public hearing. It looks like, Dr. Galbino, did you have one final question?
One more of an observation that since there's time, I'd like to reflect. And I think you all probably know this already, but I wanted to get it on the record. There are a lot of commonalities among communities, and one of them that is that people pay property tax. And even if you're a renter, you pay property tax through your landlord. The other commonality that, and in our neighborhood, that you'd be, might be surprised of, is that we have what the Portland statute or ordinance calls a property owner-maintained roadway. And there's a lot of them here. In fact, there's a lot of commonality between the east and the west and north and the south side because that, there is, there are a lot of basically unmaintained roads. I can show you pictures. I've been on my off time just drawing circles around the huge potholes just getting into our neighborhood. And see, there's only two ways to get into our neighborhood. I've seen that, I've driven around quite a bit and had meetings in the south and in the east, same thing. There's just poor infrastructure. And I think it's time for, this is what I want to get on the record, that Portland grows up and we join the rest of many US cities and actually invest in our infrastructure. We have some great opportunities with federal government, bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act. But my understanding is that if Portland doesn't see itself as maintaining the road by your house, they're not even going to ask for the money to fix that road. So I'm putting that on the record, but infrastructure is something I think maybe you might want to take, if you have time, take a look at, maybe balancing it out for poor infrastructure, I mean, so that we have commissioners who are going to come and say, we need to fix our neighborhoods, basic step. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. I think this is going to officially conclude public testimony. I want to thank everyone who came and had a pretty wonderful conversation, I would say, lots of great information. It sounds like we kind of had closing remarks, but this is the time when I hand it back over to you if you want to make any final closing statements for the audience.
Plug, thank you, for folks who perhaps had additional things that they wanted to share or have thoughts and opinions but didn't come up to the mic. We have several post-it, like giant post-its at the back of the room that include a couple of prompts that we would love your feedback on. And the prompts are, looking at the maps I like, looking at the maps I wish, and looking at the maps what if. And so it's a way of offering small bits of feedback, even if you didn't want to provide testimony at the mic. And then there is also an opportunity to, if it were up to you to vote in this moment, would you choose Alder, Cedar, Maple, or none of the above, something totally different? So if you feel so inclined to share your feedback in that way, we'd appreciate it. And thank you all for coming up this afternoon.
All right, everyone. Thanks to our interpreters and to our staff. This meeting is officially adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your day.